Welcome to the meeting of Biggleswade Town Council. I just want to remind all attendees that this is a formal meeting. And I could advise that members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak during a public open session, but not at other times. The meeting is being filmed and my being present attendees are deemed to have agreed to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings. I can advise that attendees should not disclose any personal information of individuals as this will infringe the data protection rights of that individual. And may I please ask everyone to mute their microphones when not speaking? Okay, first item on the agenda, apologies for absence. I think we have councillor Jones and I think we have councillor Sajid who's online. And I think, is anybody else, other councillors online, Asia? It's councillor Gilshere online as well. Great. Okay, councillor Gilshere's online too. So just one apologies for absence there. Okay. Two declarations of interest, pecuniary or non pecuniary, councillor Russell.
Non pecuniary and item 10L.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, number three, obviously town mayor's announcement. I've got quite a few, so bear with me for a moment. It's been a busy period over the past few weeks. I've had quite a few external visits, which has been great. In no particular order, but I was pleased to attend before the end of term, the St Andrews School Summer Assembly, which is great to see. And along with some of the other parents as well as young people there. I've visited the Studio CIC on the High Street, which I know a number of other members have visited in previous previous capacities, previous times as well. They're doing some very interesting work around sort of young people and that sort of stuff. And getting, getting different projects going and youth activity and that sort of thing. And I think we'll hear more from them in the future. I also attended the Biggles, or visited rather, the Biggleswade Water Recycling Centre, which is a bit more exciting than it sounds, down at the end of Fersen Hall Road. The Anglian Water Centre there, which covers water for the whole of Biggleswade and some of the villages and a little bit of Sandy as well. Richard Fuller invited me, Richard Fuller MP, along with another town councillor and also some North Hill residents as well. So it's a very interesting, very informative meeting and tour. I also was very pleased to visit Mantle Court, Mantles Court Care Home in recent, recently to judge their window, or sorry, the balcony competition. I get it right, I was corrected. It wasn't the window competition, it was balcony competition, where residents decorated the balconies and had a competition against each other, which I thought was rather good. And that was, that was nice to see the residents there and talk with some of our town's oldest residents there about different things. And that was, that was a good, a good thing to see and see their amazing facilities and garden there as well. I was also guest of honour at the 2065 Squadron, which is Biggleswade Air Cadet Squadron's annual dinner, which is at John O'Gorman Golf Club as well. And that was nice to, to, to be a part of that and see an amazing group of young people and speak to them. And they, they having had a great, a great time that evening, which was, was good to see. And then very finally, sorry, I attended the business forum as well, which many of you were at as well, which was good to see. And I think it was a great event. And also visited the Magpass headquarters, air ambulance headquarters up in Alcombeby, which is one of my mayor's charities this year. And got to speak to a number of the, the, the staff there, including the paramedics, the helicopter team. And also with Daryl Brown, who's the, Daryl Brown MBE, who's the chief executive of Magpass as well, and talk about their priorities for the coming year. And I'm pleased to say they're going to be supporting me and some of the charity events we'll be having in Biggleswade in the next few months as well. So it's great to have their hopefully active support going forward. So yeah, lots going on at the moment. I think there'll be more to come in September, but hopefully a little bit quieter in August at the moment. So that's, that's been good. And then the very final kind of announcement, I guess for me, was that on Friday, we have our VJ Victory Over Japan 80th Anniversary Service in the town square at the War Memorial. For those around, I realise it's in the working day, so it's tricky. But from 10:45 on Friday, 15th, for those of you who can make it. And I think that will be, you know, be a nice fitting sort of memorial and tribute to, to Victory Over Japan Day 80 years ago. Okay, great, thank you. Number four then, a public open session. Councillor Fage, please.
Thank you, chairman. And just, I don't have as many updates as you, you'll be glad to hear, just three. So firstly, on planning application 10A, I think, so this is 105 London Road. My revised response has gone on there. I have actually called that into DMC if officers are minded to recommend it for, for approval. The reason I've done that is it's a, it's a very large extension onto the back of the property and would block light. So the policies I've objected on are HQ1 in the local plan and BPD3, I think, in the, in the neighbourhood plan. I can double check that and share, but they're quite clear when it comes to things like extensions and quite, quite robust policies. So if members are minded to support that, that, that's the position I've taken on it. Also, the item on licensing, which is 9C, I think, the licensing policy consultation. So this was considered a joint committee. It's not on the agenda this evening because we're still processing the minutes for that. But essentially, the, the joint committee felt that there wasn't enough in the policy that enabled the town and parish councils and ward councillors to review and revise applications that have already been granted. So if you think about a pub licence, for example, if that pub starts attracting unsavoury characters and their licence needs to come into question, what's your mechanism for doing that? And the policy isn't clear enough on that. That was the feeling of the joint committee. Again, I'd be keen to know if that is, if that's the town council's view as well. And then just very briefly on 9A, the Public Works Loan Board Drawdown, just, just to reference a couple of play areas in, in my ward in Biggleswade East. So you've got what is called Lilac Grove, but I think it's actually Poppy Field 1, and then you've got Poppy Field 2. So there's two very, very small play areas on Poppy Field. Just to my mind, they are really tiny, they're not used. And to my mind, I think that money's perhaps better spent slightly elsewhere, particularly with Chambers Way nearby. But I'll leave that for members to discuss this evening.
Okay, thank you councillor Fage. Is there anyone online, Asia at all? No? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on. We don't have an invited speaker this evening. So number six, members' questions, please. Councillor Skilton.
Hiya, thank you. So members may be aware that through, through social media and conversations with residents, there's been a perceived increase in antisocial behaviour in the town, possibly linked with some youths and maybe the school holidays. And I've also been contacted by residents about this and also about another matter where a number of cars were tried in attempted burglaries allegedly around the town, up to 100 in one night, according to, to one of the messages I saw and which was supported by ring doorbell footage from several residents that was sent to me. And in the conversations with the residents about the antisocial behaviour and the, the potential burglaries, there was a real apathy from residents that when they reported to the police that anything would be done. And there's a perception that if you haven't got good evidence or picture or ring doorbell footage, that if you report it, nothing will be done. And I think residents, although at least the ones I've spoken to, think that reporting it will get that particular person dealt with in a certain way, when that's only part of the benefit of reporting it, when it really, that it's about building a big picture of the crimes that are going on and demonstrating the, the need for support from the police and also the concern that it's giving our residents. So basically, I'm asking if we as a town council could write to the PCC and Chief Constable to sort of relay those concerns, that there is a perception that nothing happens. And perhaps there may be some education that can come from the police and maybe even us in helping residents to understand the importance of reporting and what the benefits of reporting it are.
Okay, thank you. And before I pass over to the town clerk, I know I'm, I think I'm due to be meeting the PCC in a couple, a few weeks' time in September. So I can personally raise some of those as well. And feel free to put that in an email or whatever. I mean, I can pick, I, I think I know the kind of issues anyway, because I've had perhaps some other people contact me about similar issues as well. But I'm happy to raise that with, with, you know, the Police and Crime Commission when I see him. But I think we probably do need a formal, you know, inquiry as well, I think. So Peter, over to you.
Well, I was going to say, obviously, it's for members to deliberate this and decide, but we have a very good working relationship with Chief Inspector Goldsmith, who's in charge of community policing. Access to him is, is very straightforward. Members may want to use that opportunity before they escalate, just to give them the opportunity of responding before they go to direct to the Chief Constable, but that's entirely at your discretion.
Any, any thoughts on that? Councillor Strong.
Yes, I think it's important that we do liaise with the local inspector. We've had good relationships in the past and our police aides and councillor should be in contact as well. The thought that does come to mind is that I appreciate that people may feel that they're not being listened to by the police, but they should report it, every single one. And they should ask for a URN, a unique reference number, so they've actually got that, then it's recorded. And unfortunately, it might show that Biggleswade is subject to a crime wave in that respect. But equally, it might justify great, better policing because Bedfordshire has historically, for a number of years, been underfunded, under policed, and the underfunding is the, the local police's fault. But, so we need to work with them. And I think the town clerk's suggestion that the first point of call would be the, the local inspector is the preferable call.
Okay. Councillor Skilton, you happy with that approach in the first instance?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's really, the, the key point I wanted to get across is the, is the messaging we want to get out, that it is important and beneficial to residents to report, even if they haven't got, you know, ring doorbell footage or pictures of the people and things like that.
Okay, all right. Councillor Albon, yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna, it, it is important for building intelligence for the, for the police. And that's, that's, that's probably the main reason for reporting it. If you, if you don't expect them to solve that particular crime, then, then that, like other people said, adds to the picture. So perhaps that's something that we can do as a council, but put, put stuff out on the social media to, to advise people that, that by reporting it, they are adding to the intelligence that the police have got.
Okay, so maybe what we can do then is, is the town clerk can approach Chief Inspector Goldsmith about our concerns that I think we've, you know, raised this evening. And also whether it's appropriate for him or someone else in Bedfordshire Police, if there's a some way we can communicate that through social media and about the benefits of, of, you know, sort of intelligence gathering, et cetera, et cetera. And just get a form of words or whatever from him or something like that. So, is that okay? Great, okay, sounds good. Great, okay, thank you. Any other members' questions? Sorry, councillor Strong.
I, I hope members are aware that the Tour of Britain Cycle Race is coming to Bedfordshire on the, I think, the 4th of September. I'd like to know what consultation was had with our officers about it, because I find it very disappointing that the tour actually seems to skirt Biggleswade, to the extent it's to go through Broome, Old Warden, Langford, but somehow manages to avoid Biggleswade as a whole. And when one considers that we're the major town in East Bedfordshire, and not only that, we are historically attached to the bicycle by the great Dee Albone, not councillor Albone, I had but Dan Albone, who was instrumental in the racing bike. I think it's actually a great disappointment that Biggleswade has not been included. And I don't know whether any consultation was had, and I imagine CBC were actively involved because of the highways element. What consultation was had with the town clerk and the council as a whole? Because I think it's incredibly disappointing that such a big event is actually managing to avoid a place that actually has got a historical significance in this country with regard to the bicycle. Perhaps the clerk could tell us what he had and perhaps could raise it in an appropriate way with the appropriate authorities. And I hope that in future years, Biggleswade will be able to be joined in and enjoy the benefits of the Tour of Britain.
Over to you, town clerk, and then I've got a couple of comments on that.
Okay, so the first I would, first time I was made aware of this was by surprising the chief exec of CBC, when we had our catch-up with him about two and a bit weeks ago. And it was, it was, Marcel obviously advised me of it happening and when it was happening and where it was happening. But we didn't go into any detail in regard to prior consultation in regard to route or any discussions prior to that. So I'm sorry to say that I, you know, it's just, this is not something I've been aware of for a long period of time. We also have had, and you'll notice that within the status report that you've got, there was an email that came through very recently just to let us know that it was happening, rather than any consultation about how it might happen or whether Biggleswade would like to play a part.
And on that, councillor Strong, I must say, the first time I was made aware of it was about a fortnight ago as well, from a Facebook post by councillor Zerny. Very little anything from any of the other Biggleswade Ward councillors. And one would have hoped that perhaps if there's an opportunity to influence that, that some of them may have, if they're aware, might have done that. But no, it's, I agree, it's a missed opportunity. And it's something that the town could have got behind and we could have, there could have been other things around it, but we are where we are.
It's very much as I feared. I got, gained the impression that the first, any of us were made aware of it was when we got notified via the town clerk a fortnight ago, when he became aware of it. I was feared that there was no prior knowledge of that. So I was very disappointed to hear that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more members' questions? Okay, councillor Strong.
I'm afraid so. We've had meetings periodically with the local surgeries. It is some time since we had such a meeting. Might I suggest that if we could ask for another meeting to keep up to date and make our observations on the local health provision, it would be appropriate. And in the same way, Inspector Goldsmith did indicate that we would be getting the opportunity to have a police representative to a town council meeting. Might I also suggest it's about time that we had such a meeting that they were offering previously?
Would you want that to be specifically from the surgeries or from the ICB or?
The, the surgeries and the ICB, I think, would be sensible.
Okay, all right. Can you look into that, Peter? Okay, thank you. And yeah, it's quite right. It has been a big gap of, since we've had the last meet, a series of meetings with them and think so.
To Goldsmith was, it was relatively recently attended, didn't it?
I'm sorry, talking about the health side of things, yeah, okay. Okay, sorry, councillor Russell.
Just to say that we've been promised a representative from the ICB at the next joint committee meeting.
Okay.
So they couldn't come to the last one. So we are hoping that they can come to this next one and at least give us an idea of what's happening with the reorganisation.
Thank you. No, it's very helpful and that's probably a useful place to have it as well. So thank you for that.
It's, it's until October.
Okay, I think it's still worth asking for a, a sort of very localised one, but I think that's useful in the, in the interim. So. Good, thank you. Okay, good, right. Moving on. Number seven, minutes and recommendations of the meeting of the 8th of July. So firstly, for accuracy and then for matters arising. So I'm starting on page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. And then a blank 13. Okay, sorry. Yes, there was, there was one correction that I'd, I'd noticed before the meeting on the, about D, sorry, 15D. Because obviously we haven't had a meeting on the 8th of August, so that just needs correcting. But otherwise, I think it was pretty, pretty accurate. So councillor Russell. Disappointing. Yeah, no, it's down for a separate conversation, but yeah, okay. So, okay, we'll just, we'll part that one. Okay, so, okay, so any matters arising then from the 8th of July, a meeting, so page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Okay, great. So we take them as an accurate, yeah, move it? Yep, great, okay. So the minutes of the meeting from the 15th of July, so it's TCM. That's just a no, isn't it? Yeah, okay. Do you want me to go through it page by page or no? Let's leave it, okay. Chair TCM's not here anyway, so it wouldn't be fair. Okay, so moving on to number eight then, matters arising. So we got the, anything from the 8th of July? Well, we, the, nothing came up, so we can move on from that, I don't think. Yeah, okay, there was nothing, nobody wanted to talk about that. So straight into number nine then, items and, start again, items for consideration, public, public works loan board drawdown. Okay, we have a paper in front of us and a recommendation. Yeah, I'll let the town clerk speak for a couple of minutes and then we can have a discussion, please. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, over to you, Peter.
Thank you. Ernest and Karim and others have played a significant part in putting this paper together. I did an interesting exercise today. I looked back at the various conversations that we've been having connected to the subject matter over the last two years now. And we've had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I think there's been nine different reports going to PLOS and FNGP and also council connected to this opportunity. And members will remember going back to 2021, when we began this journey, when we tried to have a kind of all encompassing conversation around our play areas and to try and understand what sums of money might be required to bring them up to a better standard. And obviously, we've made some progress. Franklin's, Brunel, Kaitland's have made significant impacts now. And we're moving forward based on that. There was also conversations taking place in the past about what might be a reasonable time connected to any borrowing elements connected to this. As much as the equipment has a warranty for 25 years, members thought it might be more sensible if there was a drawdown, that the repayment period might be over a 15-year period. They will have, members will have previously seen that the work that is suggested here has the support of Bedfordshire Rural Community Council, the charity. Also, there was a consultation that took place on two occasions in regard to residents expressing an opinion on whether they were broadly in support of the work. The reason why there were two surveys was that DCLG came back and actually asked the council for a change in the specific wording, because they changed their process slightly. So we went out twice. As much as the survey was completed, I have to say that if we were looking at it from a kind of, is it proportionate in regard to our population, 143 people responded. So we have a population of 23,500, 17,800 adults. So it's, it's a sharing exercise, but it's not in that sense massively proportionate. I think one of the key issues here is that if this went to council back on the 8th of July and members asked for a better and clearer understanding connected to the six areas of work, and that is summarised on page 23, so it's quite specific in the nature of the things that we're proposing to change. I think one last thing to say before we open it up to discussion is obviously, there is no final determination in regard to whether this should or shouldn't take place. We've at least got an agreement in principle from DCLG that if you wanted to do it, we can go ahead. The key element is that when we have the planning process connected to this, looking at the chairman of FNGP, the sums of money connected to the borrowing elements of this are built into the current financial year budget. So if you were of a mind to draw down the sum, then at least we are, we're ready and prepared to do so. Yep, so over to you, Chair, to widen the session.
Thank you very much, town clerk. That's very helpful. Okay, any comments, questions about? Councillor Foster, let you start.
Okay, I have to say, I'm a bit torn with this. I'd appreciate, Peter, what, what you, what you've explained here, that we've been through this a number of times, a number of iterations. We've discussed it at length. And I think the important thing to, for us to really think about here is, is that we're, we're talking about public money, we're talking about an £80,000 effective investment in our, in our play areas over a 15-year period, £8,000 a year. And for me, I think it's absolutely vital that we are using public money effectively. And I appreciate that we've been through this a number of times. And I also appreciate the fact that we've now got the, the breakdown of what, what the equipment is and in which areas. And having, having sort of reviewed them, and, and to be fair, we, we might, because we've seen them before, doesn't necessarily mean that it's the right thing. And I'm at a point now where I, I think it's, we should be focusing on the areas that are, get the most, most traffic, if you like, most footfall, number one. And also the areas that are weakest, if you like. And my, my instinct on this is that, in, in line with, to a certain extent with what councillor Fage is saying, that Lilac Grove, Grove and Poppy Field may not be areas that need particular attention at this stage. So I'm, I'm going to position this for the moment, but that was, was my first source. And I also think that maybe Barclay Close, given its proximity to, the, the road's gone from it, I think, but yeah. That maybe that, that isn't an area that specifically needs attention. My, my instinct at, at this stage is that we should be focusing our attention on Stratton Way, Fairfield Road and Watkins Wall. And the reason I'm saying Watkins Wall, and particularly, it's a small play area, it is a small play area. So, but because of its location, it is in between Fairfield Road and it is in between Franklin. So on that basis, a small area, but I think that particular one does, does require improvement. With regards to Lilac Grove and Poppy Field, because they are very, very close to Chambers Way, it, it would be good to get them, get them up to, up to a level. But I think that the traffic is more likely to, the children are a lot more likely to be playing in Chambers Way, in my experience. Having, having kids of sort of this age, you're more likely to go to a bigger play, play area. Albeit, that shouldn't restrict us from improving the, some of the smaller areas where they absolutely need it. I'm just not completely convinced that this is, that, that all six are absolutely essential at this stage. So welcome other thoughts from, from, from others. And I'm also not completely sure whether investing now, investing over, over a 15-year period is necessarily the right way forward. But I, I'm, I'm interested to hear what other people's views are on this. But certainly, we, I, I think probably we, we could justify doing so if we're looking to enhance in the, the areas that are most in, in need. We do have a greater investment in our public realm team, which does, will allow us to improve some of those areas and look after some of those areas. But it also, if we do take on further equipment, will allow us to maintain the equipment should we go forward. So that's, that's my initial thoughts. And I'm, I'm not ready to make a proposal. I'm very keen, keen to hear other, other people's views on it. But I, I've got a fairly clear idea of what I'd like to see. I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you, councillor Foster. Okay, councillor Russell, councillor Albon and councillor Barrett.
I'm interested in what you've been saying about this, because particularly Poppy Field, which is the two areas that I go past quite a lot. I've never seen anybody using them. And I think we need to discuss what we could do with them, rather than using them as the play areas that they are now. Or keep one of the play areas in Poppy Field and could we repurpose another? And I think that one of the issues there may be, they were provided under section 106, under some sort of hierarchy that Central Beds had about leaps and neeps, local play areas and neighbourhood play areas. But people aren't using them, and particularly what they call the leaps, where there's equipment for perhaps, what? Two to five at the most. They're not really very well used. So I think we should think about taking Poppy Field out. I don't know Lilac Grove so well, but I think that that's probably in the same category. And I agree that there is at least a decent play area near Barclay Close. I think Stratton Way and Fairfield Road are key, because they're in different parts of the town where there aren't big play areas at the moment. And I think maybe we need to think about investing a bit more in those areas. Particularly perhaps Fairfield Road, because with the people who go to the football and the cricket, there's quite a bit of traffic from people taking their, their children along. So I'm inclined to agree with councillor Foster that it might be a good idea to focus £80,000 in a slightly different way. I'll stop there for the moment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I've got um councillor Albon next, please.
Yeah, um just to re- reiterate what the clerk said, we have been speaking about this for here and a half, something like that. Um. The um the the point about um le- leaving some some out and and the footfall. Um, we we don't know what the footfall, I can say the footfall is. Um, it'd be very difficult to ascertain that and by by not improving them, you're you're less likely to get to get footfall there anyway. They're they're not as attractive as 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 other play areas. Um, so yeah, I'm kind of disappointed to to hear that we're 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 finding fault with this at this at this stage. Um, I prefer to just continue with with what we were planning originally. Um, yeah, I think I'll leave it there for now.
Okay, thank you. Um, I've got councillor Barrett and then um over to the town clerk after that.
Hi, yes, um. I don't I don't have an issue really with us prioritizing the ones that need to be looked at or even considering uh reuse of some, um but but not at that point at this stage. Um, I agree with councillor Auburn that we have talked about this a lot and gone through this and agreed this a number of times, and it is in um a budget for this year. Um, and the principle of everything to do with our precept was to move from a fix when it breaks, which is the situ- situation we were in, which was quite costly. So more if cost effective way of looking after our public realm and and these sorts of things by maintaining them. And I see this as a natural extension to that principle. And if we're going to continue to to follow that, then I see this as something that we should continue with for tho- for those reasons. Um, I'll stop there.
Okay, I'll come to the clerk and then after that I've got councillor Strawn and councillor Knight as well and then, yeah. Okay, I'm I'm happy to, yeah, yeah, I will. So um councillor Strawn next then, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I understand all the points that have been raised so far and I've got some sympathy with them in many respects. We have been discussing this in this council for a very considerable time. And the whole point of this, I thought, was to improve the facilities for the people of the town and the young people of the town. But I think we're possibly getting ourselves slightly bogged down in two different aspects. One is we have the finance approved for the improvement of these recreation facilities, these play areas. We have that approved, it's all budgeted for, it's all, in fact, we've already received the money to pay the loan for this year from the precept in practical terms, so the finance I don't, I think should be there and we should be doing, we should go ahead and draw it down so that we can achieve what we want. I take on board particularly the point as to whether all the areas are as important, but certainly I think all the members that have spoken agree that there's effectively three blocks on the figure one on page twenty three that are appropriate and they form the major part of the expenditure. If members had difficulties and concerns over, say, Lilac Grove and the Poppyfields, I don't see that there's anything from the councils recommending that we take the take the money so that we can progress the first three and that the remaining three could go back to PLOS for them to consider as to the detail and whether that's appropriate there and to do it that way, because that way we're considering all the issues. It may be that we might take one of those areas out from its current use and not put the equipment in. I don't think it's, I'm I'm not an expert on children's play equipment, I'm not expert on children's playgrounds, so I've got, I don't know, but I say it seems to me to be logical, we've but we've got the money in the budget, the people of the town have already started to effectively pay for this by having paid at the preset. Um, and I think there's a number of issues that I think from the jet, from all the previous speakers, we're agreeing that we should be getting on and doing with some of the areas, it's just certain areas in doubt, so why don't we actually take the money? Agree that we place orders if that's appropriate for this committee to do, the council to do so with regard to, say, Stratton Way, Fairfield Road and Watkins Wall, which seems to be the thing. And the other matters be referred back to PLOS. There will be money there for PLOS to do something from the unused elements, but we'll be able to achieve something and we'll be able to approve the town. If we don't take this money on this occasion, I'm not sure that we would be in a position to raise further public works loan board and officers to spend the time and effort and indeed the council to spend the time and effort going through it. We've been through it for a couple of years. Um, it doesn't shed us in particularly good light, we go all the way and say, oh, no, we're not going to do it, because my concern then is none of this work gets done and the youngsters in the town don't get the facilities they need. Those are my thoughts, but I think we should be taking taking the money and possibly putting back certain areas to for PLOS to review.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Knight and then councillor North afterwards.
Thank you. Um, so I don't think we should be drawing down the money until we have a very clear plan that we're aligned on. And what I I think really concerns me is that I don't see a recommendation from PLOS and I'm not satisfied that the plan is sufficiently strategic, given at this stage, we're still debating which areas should be improved and exactly how and for whom. To be honest, I'm not really satisfied that there's been enough analysis of the need. I agree, a survey probably isn't the way to do it, but we do need to, and I've said this for years, we do need to look at the demographic, the age. We do need to look strategically at the different play areas. Maybe it's better to have a smaller number of large play areas where we invest more rather than a larger number of smaller play areas. I don't know, I'm not satisfied that work has been done. Um. I think, you know, my my position is that we absolutely shouldn't draw down the money until we know exactly what we're doing it, so if I was to make a proposal, it would be that this needs to go back to PLOS, we need to have a walkabout, we need to get strategic, we need to get the needs analysis done. And then it should go back to FNGP with a recommendation to look at other funding sources as well. And PWLB, we've consistently said should be a funding source of last resort. And I'm not really satisfied we've explored other funding options. So I see some incredulity across the table, but that's that's uh that's what I would propose.
I'll let councillor North speak and then we can go from there, because he was down to speak.
Some years ago, uh the problem of the small, particularly a smaller, well, all players really was addressed. Obviously, we know what's happened in Franklin's, we've done, had a major exercise also in in uh what's whatever, what's it called, these one, Kaitland's and also Brunel Drive, but there are all these other ones, the smaller ones. And a decision was made by the council to set up a regular annual budget allocation for the repair, refurbishment and replacement of equipment as needed in all the play areas. That was done some years ago. Now, people have denied that it was there for replacement, but that is not true. It was there for replacement as necessary. I would like to know, I don't know quite what's happened to that money, but we've we've seen reports and picture photographs of the public realm team having carried out refurbishment of pieces of equipment in various play areas. And it seems to me that that was the right approach, to do it gradually as needed in smaller areas. And of course, a continual process, if you like, of setting priorities and making decisions, which people have referred to the need to do, which I would agree with, I think we do need to think very carefully about what actually we're doing here. The point is the money is there already and therefore this loan is unnecessary. It's trying to solve a problem that does not exist. The other point I'd make is it's not, although it is said that it's clear what is proposed, it's not clear what's proposed because there's no list of the play areas that are not included here. There's no list of what is going to be removed and taken out of the play areas and whether it's serviceable, repairable or not. That sort of analysis does not appear to have been done, it's just a statement of what it's intended to install in six play areas. That's not a complete description of what's proposed at all. And I think we need we need more information on that before it can be properly considered. And I do, I totally agree, we need a very clear and serious review. Councillor Knight has raised, I think, I don't know whether it was a formal proposal, but certainly suggested way forward with it and looking at it more carefully. And I would agree, and I agree that that is the way that we should go, we should not uh not carry out this, not agree to this drawdown at all.
Okay, thank you. I know the 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 town clerk wants to speak because um okay, councillor Thomas, and I'll come to Peter, and I'm conscious that there was a proposal on the table as well, so let's um take them in order.
Yeah, um, I kind of agree with councillor North because because he was chair of PLOS when all this was going on. I was deputy. And we had a very clear mandate for the first two playgrounds, everybody said we charged ahead, did it all. And we we've partly got um Kaitland's done, but it's not quite finished. And we're awaiting the extra funds for that one, which are coming from another source, which is what what we said we'd do. Um, in terms of the other playgrounds, I don't I don't see any appetite from anybody to charge ahead and do it. It's taken this long, we're obviously not that um interested. I think the the public's response was fairly low key, they weren't that interested either, from what I could see, so maybe that's the answer, you just take, have a think about what we're doing and and look at it again if needs be and do it, do a survey maybe or walk around or have another look at it, but it doesn't look like anybody's got really appetite to do this. Um, like we did the first two. The first one was very, very successful, the second one, we should finish off, but the rest, uh we put a plan, a longer term plan in, which should scoop up any other playgrounds. For a town this size, we seem to have a lot of small playgrounds. I've never been anywhere that's had more than two or three big ones. Uh, but there's lots of little playgrounds and maybe that's the issue.
Okay, uh uh councillor Foster.
I would like to come back on that. I I I have to disagree with you, Colin, on that. I think it's not that there isn't an appetite to improve the play areas at all. I think it's far from that. I think the important, what the message I'm trying to get across here is that uh we we absolutely do have an appetite for improving our play areas, but what we should be doing is making sure that if we are going to go down a route of a public works loan board, and that may be the decision that the the council um eventually uh does come come to, that we are, if we use that money in the right way, and I, at this stage, I'm not completely convinced that the 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 items that are on this list, albeit that they, whether we've been through them or not, at this stage, I I'm now not minded to to think this is the right way, but it's not about not supporting improving play areas, far from it. It's about improving the key ones, the ones that are not saying the key areas, but the ones the ones that we we perhaps we make a judgment and and I appreciate councillor Knight's point of view that uh we don't necessarily have a a true picture of what the traffic is in these areas, but but if we're not in a position where we can get that information or 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 minded to do that, we we need to make a a realistic judgment on what are the areas that do need it, so uh and I appreciate councillor Knight has a sort of started a proposal, there's some other bits that I think we should include in that, but it is absolutely not about not improving things, it's about doing it in the right way over a sort of proper proper process. So sorry to disagree with you, but I think that's important, we get the message across. Can I come back on that?
Yeah, I didn't say that, did I? Like I said, we had a maintenance plan to to go forward and fix fix what we are. I mean, councillor North and I were in right at the beginning and uh we did the first two for that reason. But again, it's it's the the need is might not be there, but that's what that was.
Okay, alright.
We should have done, we should do a sort of sort of survey, we should have a walk around as a council access.
Okay.
Fully agree with your cancelled access.
Alright, thank you. I I think before I pass over to Peter, I think I'm picking up from the room that there is a, there is an appetite to improve our players, I'm certainly not detecting that there isn't, so I don't know. And so I think we we want to want to do something and obviously we need to get to a point of where we take that and obviously what player is in particular and 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 has has been discussed, so um I don't want people to get the impression that I think the council's not interested in improving the players, because I think that absolutely is the case. Just finding the best way to doing it and that's that's where we need to go from. Town clerk, and then um I'll come back to councillor Knight.
Okay, so um if we go back to the start of the report, I think the first thing to say, it's it's very pleasing to know, going back to two thousand and twenty one, that the council was enthusiastic and keen to do something about its old play areas and to try and make sure that proper maintenance was done and where necessary equipment could be replaced. It's sensible to do that and we have a responsibility towards our maintenance of our capital equipment to make sure that's done and to make sure that it's health and safety compliant for the people who use it, so that's a good and sensible thing to do. Um, if we go back to what's been happening over the last few years, then I can remember a time here where we were looking at a PWLB loan for play areas of nearly two hundred thousand pounds, which was frankly a massive amount of money and and seemed disproportionate. Over the period of time now, we have a public realm team that has um matured and has a different skill set now, and the reason why we're not even talking about two hundred thousand pounds anymore, and it's for members to decide whether you know, we want to go down with the lower figure, is actually our public realm team are now very effective in maintaining that equipment ourselves, not closing it down and not buying new equipment. So I think there's a bit of a success story there for our public realm team, which which should be uh, which should be recognised. Um, I have a lot of sympathy for councillor Knight's opinion connected to whether or not we have a scientific, robust, data led, understanding of where demand is, and I have to say we don't. Uh, we we've got a sense about where change is required because of age of equipment and where it might be replaced by something that is appropriate. But what we do not have is a clear sense about who uses what play area, what type of of people are using it, what age they're using it, uh whether there's adults also using it. There is not some scientific data led understanding of where we might go. And that might well inform things going forward. There's a sense, but there's nothing to prove. Um, obviously, whatever we do should be fit for purpose. If members decide not to go ahead with with the summarized uh descriptions here, then if the public realm manager were here today, I think he would be saying that if we're not going uh ahead with certain areas, we need to understand whether the equipment that's currently there is safe, it is fit for purpose, the maintenance is done on a regular basis, we just need to be reflective of that to make sure whether we should or shouldn't fit that. We keep on top of the health and safety related items. I'm more concerned about whether old for new. Yep, um and the last thing I was going to go back to say is what councillor uh Russell was saying. Um, we have had conversations with CBC in the past about change of status. So it may be that some of our uh play areas should be uh, there should be a change of status, that they shouldn't be play areas anymore, that the equipment should be taken away and something else should happen. There is an original agreement with CBC for those designated areas that they should be green spaces. Yep, and we would have to have a separate conversation with CBC to disengage with that and to try and put them in a different direction, and that might be appropriate. And it may be that Biggles Wade has far too many small play areas and not enough large, well, well, well constructed play areas. I was actually in Hertford last week and I was looking at theirs. They have one absolutely massive play area that is kind of, you know, you know, you know, four, five times the size of Franklin's, where they've spent hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands, yeah. So there's an, there's an alternative approach to this, so I'll stop there.
Thank you, Town Clerk. Okay, I'm conscious we have a proposal, sorry, councillor Foster, do you want to say something? And I'll come back, I'm conscious we do have a proposal on the table, do you want to get to the bottom?
I think it's important to to stress that health and safety, safety of the equipment is not an issue. Uh, I I want to stress that point, you know, if this were anything to do with safety, it's not an issue, we do it. So, and I think I picture you, you're actually, you're saying that, so any reference to safety is not not part of this thing. At at any point, this equipment, it's unsafe, it takes, it's taken off and is part of the maintenance budget would be repair, either repaired or replaced or or whatever, so thi- this is about our decision of how we, whether we to draw down the money and also what 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 we want to draw it down for, so that that's that's the thing, so appreciate councillor Knight has started a proposal, if you, Mark, you want to continue or I'll I'll.
Well, if you have a more developed proposal, would you want to propose something and I'll withdraw mine?
Well.
Sounds like you have some other ideas.
Go on, councillor Foster, then I'll come back to councillor.
My starting point is that at this stage, we are not in a position to draw down the money. If we if we remember that the budget process, we uh, this is always a uh an option for us, it wasn't a requirement, and we we had the conversation that said we we built it into the budget in the in if we felt that it was appropriate to, so at this stage, I don't think we are at that point. Uh, what I would like to do is not 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 to do it, but to to keep it in in mind so that uh we've still got the option to do it. I would like uh PLOS and members of other other members of the council to actually um visit the the sites that we've got here in our list uh so that we can at least agree or not agree whether the approach on Fairfield and Stratton Way and Watkins is the approach, because it may be that when, if we visited the sites, we felt actually that isn't the way forward, the the way forward is to do that. I just don't think that we've actually done uh done all of these and visited all of them and given it enough scrutiny. Whether, and and I'm not sure whether officers will agree with that, because officers appreciate you have done a lot of work there, but I think from a committee point of view, I'm not sure we've given it enough scrutiny and I would like to, as chair of the committee, make sure that we've done that so we can justify both the equipment that's being proposed, but also that we've we've done this work thoroughly thoroughly enough. And that's frustrating for officers and I do appreciate that, so that would be the first, not draw it down at the moment, we do a site visit. We take on board the the point that are there sites uh that are outside of this that we could repurpose, and I think that's a separate conversation. But we should be thinking about that as well, um. May, I'm not sure whether we, we've got the capacity to go down to, to visit every single play area that the town council operates at this, this, this stage, but. We perhaps need to be minded to do that, so there is the, the usage, uh, and, and, and. We, we're not going to get a real, a clear idea about usage, so. I think it's, we visit the sites, take a view on whether actually there is some, uh. It is the right thing to do or it's not the right thing to do, and then we come back to a, a future meeting, uh, we have PLOS in October, uh. I appreciate that the quote, this quote, it's twenty first of October, uh, so that. Uh, I think what I would suggest is that officers in the meantime, uh, go, contact the supplier. Uh, to say that we are at a point where we're, uh, uh, not, not entirely decided, so is there any possible extension to that quote, should we feel it's appropriate? I'm not sensing that's the way we're going to go, but, uh, I'll leave that for officers to decide whether that's the way you want to go, but we, we, we. Do the site visits, we, we, uh, we come back to a future meeting, whether that's, we think we can do it in September, or we do it in, in, in. So we, or we do it at PLOS, I think probably PLOS is the right way forward, go to PLOS and that gives us an opportunity to then come back to the November meeting to, uh. Make a form, formal proposal.
Um, I've got councillor Skilton and councillor Russell.
Right, thank you, it's been a really interesting debate and I've, um, and I thank members for their, for their input on this. I, I seem to remember from PLOS that this list, whether it was this list or what, when we talked about what we were going to prioritise was. It was all based around the age and quality of the equipment or the condition of it, and suddenly we're now talking about footfall and usage and, um. Councillor Foster's talked about going out to make site visits, I question whether we have the expertise to decide whether we know what. We know which ones we need to refurbish, you know, I don't know, yeah, it's, you know, how, how do we, how do we prioritise what we're going to do? We've suddenly moved the goalposts from talking about the condition effectively to now footfall and usage. Um, you know, we, we might always just say we want all the, um, all the parks in our wards refurbished, for instance, you know.
Okay, I've got councillor Russell and then I'm Karim.
I think one of the key things that hasn't been picked up in what councillors Knight and Foster have been saying is that. Particularly with the Fairfield Road site, we might need to add equipment, it's whether this is the, the right equipment. For the kind of age range that we might get there, and therefore whether the specification needs to change, and I do actually think that, um. It may be necessary to get a proper re-quote, because if we change the spec on this, there will have to be a re-quote if we're going to go ahead. Um, I just want to come back to, um, one of the play areas in Poppy Field, and. It is opposite where my daughter lives and I know that it is not used. I just know from lots of observations, so, um. I'm glad that the clerk has been able to say that there is a possibility to repurpose. Because it may well be that that particular area could be a nice seating area like we did with one of our other play areas, which I can't think the name of. Old age, so I think, you know, that it is more than just, um. The condition of the equipment, it's whether it's appropriate for. Current use, but also for the kinds of age ranges we might want to be providing for.
Okay, thank you, Karim, do you want to, I've got two other councillors, but do you want to, is it relevant to a point that's just gone or, okay. Councillor Strong, do you still have a question or?
Wait, I was just thinking that, I think if there's going to be a review of what needs to be dealt with, that needs to be dealt with by PLOS. I don't think it needs to come back to finance as such in the future, because the finance is covered, I think that is for the chairman of PLOS to. Make the arrangements and deal with that and progress matters, and I think it's for the chairman of PLOS to actually call a, be a site inspection. Because this council always used to have meetings and inspect the grounds. And I think it's something that we haven't done over the last couple of years or so in any great detail, so I think it's important that we actually. Councillors actually say, now, I'm not an expert on the equipment or otherwise, but I think it's important that we actually. Highlight and see what is on the ground, and then we, it's better, it banks a better debate, um. I'm reluctant to delay matters because I'd like, quite like the bigger projects that we seem to agree should be done, to be done. But I think that the very least that should be done is that there needs to be a review of certain of the areas that. Are in doubt as to whether they're appropriate for spending this money on, so I think that. It is going to be, my suggestion is very much down to the chairman of PLOS to take the lead on this, um, in terms of progressing it that side. If the, regardless of the decision whether we draw down or not tonight, even if we drew down the money, I still think it's. Important that PLOS makes the final decision on exactly what is obtained.
Okay, thank you, I've got, um, councillor Barrett and councillor Agnew next, and then I think officers want to come in as well, so, yeah.
It's a very quick question, it's, um, obviously we're getting to the point where we're going to have a vote.
Yep, we are, yes.
Just to help me with that vote, with the PWLB loan, how long is that available to us, should we delay it?
Going to ask that question, but you beat me to it councillor Barrett.
Perfect timing, I was about to comment on that, so thank you for that.
Go on, yeah.
So I have to admit, I do not know the answer to the question, so I need to go back and check with DCLG about how. Long this live acceptance lasts for, one consequence might be, and it's not, it's not a reason not to do anything. It may be that we have a specific time period to say yes or no, if we say no, it may be that we have to then submit another application. Uh, at another time to go through the process again, so I, I need to find the answer to that question.
Okay.
And one last thing while I.
Okay, go on then Peter.
Was only to say that, um, again, if the public realm manager were here, and he knows more about this than I do. The logic of the specification has been drawn up by somebody who knows much more about it than I do, so the logic about whether or not this is fit for purpose. Is drawn from that person's experience, yeah.
Okay, thank you, right, uh, I've got councillor Agnew and councillor Knight, and then we're going to have a vote, because we've been at it for over half an hour now, so, okay.
Agreeing principle that we need to postpone the decision on the loan, but only because I think. We're trying to speak pragmatically, but I'm just wondering whether when we were taking decisions on Franklin's and, and. Cutlands, for example, we did indeed any statistical analysis of what exactly is needed and who is there to vote. Because as we speak here, in two years' time, the children are growing up and the demographics changes, so what we deem to be okay for today. Might be slightly changing tomorrow, as a very unscientific model of a teenager, I'd like to say that. I, I agree with the repurposing item, and therefore I'd like to start maybe the proposal to what seems to be. That A, we postponed the drawing pending Peter's research as to till what time actually we have that lever. Secondly, out of the list, we pick only those that absolutely in need of the brightening. And here, I would say unscientifically, public needs to see the innovation, because unfortunately for us. The decisions that we are making about our town are very limited in how we can influence the fact that we are. Influencing the look and the feel of the town and, and, and play areas, others kind of various. You see them bright and nice, filled with children, and you know we're doing something right, so say if we were to pick on the three. Big ticket titles and re-quoted, it may well be that the loan would, would not need to be seventy thousand. Pounds, but maybe only forty thousand, and lastly to conclude, there was an item about the precept increase. And that is not really the item in my view, and maybe partially when we think about loan, we could think. About not having that kind of implication in our budget.
Okay, thank you, uh, on that point councillor Agnew, I mean, others will probably, who are here at the time will, may want to comment, but. Actually, no, don't, because it's gone on long enough, but the point around Franklin's was that a, a lot of that emerged from after Covid, when. A lot of residents are using the parks more, uh, and, and, and wanted to use them more and realised they weren't really up to, up to standard and were not where they should be. And we chose Franklin's because it was the nearest one to the town centre, it also. What goes out onto the Green Wheel and Jordans and so on, so it's quite a strategic location for, for investing in. Um, and also it goes up to a much, uh, sort of older age range, I think, with certainly a couple of the, um, or two or three of the different. Bits of equipment, so I think it was, I can't remember all the discussions, but it seemed a very obvious candidate. Not scientifically, I have to agree, I don't remember having particular criteria, but. When we put all of that together, it seemed obvious that that was going to be the thing, and Covid was a big driving factor there and people using the parks a lot more. And, and it was something that we, uh, we'd let slip and, and on the way to improving, so, okay, good, um, councillor Knight, sorry, last comment please.
Oh, I think councillor Foster made a proposal, so I'd like to second that.
Great.
The only point, new point I'd like to make is if it's not going to go through F and GP, I think PLOS needs to look at the PLOS budget as part of reviewing the, the, the works. And look at the revenue and capital budget available to PLOS. In addition to this potential source of funding, and obviously consider whether any of this could actually be procured. Using the, the funding that's already available to, to councillor North's point, thank you.
Okay, good.
Would you like me to summarise?
Yes, please do, um, councillor Foster.
I'm going to keep my summary brief. No drawdown at this stage, sites visit, uh, by PLOS in advance of the PLOS meeting in October. We look at repurpose, uh, the, the option to repurpose some of the smaller areas, so that's for the clerk of the office to, to, to consider, but I think we'll, we'll. I'm going to leave just repurpose at the moment in there, uh, and. Following PLOS meeting, we then come back to the full council meeting, uh, in November to make a decision, uh, and within that, within our. Our considerations, uh, in, in taking into consideration councillor Russell's point, it isn't just about. Uh, looking at the equipment that's in the plan, but whether there are additional things that we might feel appropriate. Uh, but well, my proposal would be that we only look at the six at this stage, because that's what have been highlighted as being the priority ones. But with PLOS to consider at the other areas at some point.
Okay, great, thank you, and you're, uh, not, okay, second link, right, great, okay, brilliant, go on councillor Strong.
Just a question, what are the implications of that proposal with the delay of. Plus until October, in the event of the drawdown having been required before October? Because that, I think, is relevant, so there might be, there needs to be some flexibility that. Plus might need to take a meet sooner in order to comply with that.
It's, it might, go on councillor Foster, do you want to come?
From, from my point of view, I'm, I'm, I would be happy to play, uh, have a, an, an emergency PLOS meeting if, if there was a need to do so. Subject to Peter's advice on, uh, when the drawdown of the loan.
Timings and everything.
But that, you know, bear that in mind, but that we may decide that actually we don't want to do it at that point, so I think if we know what the timing it is. Then we, we can consider what to.
Just for the sake of making sure that we don't get caught out by a resolution we passed today, which we then stuck with for six months. That could you perhaps just add to your resolution that this, uh, if, that, that, that in the event of the drawdown being required before a certain. Uh, date, before the next PLOS meeting, that you will call, that an urgent PLOS meeting will be called. With a view to going back to council for drawdown if that should be necessary.
Asia, what councillor Strong just said, yes.
Everybody, everybody get that, is that all captured, everybody understand that, good. Okay, so we've got a proposal, a second, can we now vote, so all those in favour of the proposal as set out by councillor Foster? Okay, and all those against extensions, okay, great, thank you very much, that's carried, thank you. Thanks for that debate everyone, that was a good one, it's, uh, long, but we got there, now lost track where we are. Oh, we still have rather a lot to get through, so we need to maybe speed this up a little bit, um, can, item nine B complaints code. Um, is that you Helen? Yeah, Helen, yeah, if you could be brief, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, so presenting the complaints code for members approval, it was presented at the personnel, most recent personnel meeting. And, and I've made the alterations that are requested at the personnel meeting. So it's just for members' comment approval or any further alterations.
Okay, councillor Barrett?
Sorry to ask a question, but on page forty five, uh, section for record keeping. Uh, the complaint that we recorded, uh, for how long and who owns the process to keep it updated.
Okay, Helen?
Uh, probably say about seven years, I mean, in line with all the other kind of information that we keep, yeah.
Yeah, I think if it's inconsistent with, sorry, not inconsistent, consistent with other HR law, then I think that's, that's fine, isn't it, yeah.
And then the other point was about, about where it's kept.
Uh, just who owns the updating process, there's, there's other people mentioned in here, just who owns that record keeping, who, who is the owner?
Oh, that would be me, and that would be, yeah, again, me, just, just because I'll be keeping hold of it and I'll just have that information on.
Okay, Peter, do you want to say something? Okay, councillor Skilton, sorry.
Thank you, um, it just to me, it isn't entirely clear in here what happens if we can't resolve the complaint, it, it all. The last bit is, um, the town clerk or mayor will have ten days from the date of the complaint. Complaint has escalated, the complaint has escalated the complaint for them to respond with how to resolve the complaint and any further action that needs to be taken, that's like the, the second stage, if you like. Um, it just says how to resolve the complaint, and it may be that. We can't resolve it and, and what is their recourse if any, and. If we can't resolve it, what do we, you know, what do we say that it's, we, we are unable to resolve it, does that need to be in the policy?
Yeah. Peter, sorry, do you want to comment on that, town clerk?
Yeah, I mean, I think. Kind of, I'm kind of drawn in two different directions, and then, then, then there needs to be an escalation route, because you're right to say in occasions, it's not going to be, it's not going to work. And maybe that there's some, should be some form of member escalation route perhaps, mayor, deputy mayor, maybe. They can maybe from a political perspective try and put it in a different direction, and also to take advice about whether or not, um, some formal institution like. Ombudsman might, may or may not be appropriate, but yeah, we need to, we need further advice.
Councillor Skilton?
Thank you, because I don't think parish councils are subject to the ombudsman, um, uh, having looked into it after we received a complaint from a resident relatively recently. Um, but maybe the suggestion is that if it cannot be resolved by an officer or the mayor, it goes to appeals.
Go on town clerk, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at, at the moment, the, um. The structure of our, our appeals committee is focused on, it doesn't mean it can't change, it's focused primarily. On arch HR related matters, so we would need to try and, try and, um, change the terms of reference, which we could do, so it could go in that direction, yeah. But I guess my only concern would be, it's kind of, I could get a sense it might clog the system in the sense we've got. We're spending, I think, forty six days, forty six evenings a, a year now on our committee and working group elements, so. I guess what we should try and do is the KISS principle, try and keep it as simple as possible, I think.
Okay, uh, councillor Strong?
Um, in view of councillor Skilton's comments and the answers that have been given, I don't feel that we can approve the. Complaints code for tonight, at least not as it, without a caveat that there needs to be further work into it. Because quite clearly there is something else that needs to be carried out, so. In the spirit of what councillor Skilton's been suggesting, I suggested that we. Defer this and ask that a further report come back to council covering the points raised by councillor Skills.
Okay, all in agreement, yeah, there's no dissent, councillor Russell, sorry. Before we move on.
I, I understand what the town clerk's saying about the appeals committee has always been for HR. But there does need to be something else there, if councillor Skilton is right about the local government ombudsman. So if that is right, and there isn't that recourse for somebody, then I think the logical thing would be to call the, the appeals committee, and. If we have to, we have to, I'm not anticipating that this is going to be something that happens every five minutes, it hadn't better be.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I, I think, you know, that's, that's a worthwhile thing to look at, even if it does mean changing the terms of reference of the appeals.
So if, if we defer this by a month or so, we can, we can look at a, a work, a, a work, you know, work around with that, okay, councillor Skilton?
Just one other point, if the appeals committee isn't appropriate and if we look at options, then may, you may be able to ask the local ombudsman to look at it. Voluntarily, so, so we, we may not be subject to their code, but we can ask them to look into it as an independent body. If we choose to, I believe, but that, obviously I'd like, if officers were to check that.
Well, I was going to say, yeah, I think if we, if we give officers a month, you know, four weeks, whatever, to look into that, that can be a potential option, can't it, uh, councillor Albo?
I, I think the appeals committee can look at, it's, it's looked at other non-HR issues in the past, um, allotment related issue particularly comes to mind.
Okay, yeah, but I think we then need to, sorry councillor Foster.
One thing, that. The, the title of the report complaints code, I'm, I'm, I'm a bit baffled by that, I don't recall anything, and, and it might be my memory, so. Uh, did, did we, did we agree at personnel that it was going to be called the complaints code, I, I just generally can't remember it, so that, that was just, that might query.
Okay, councillor Albo?
I think it was called the complaints code and vexatious. And the vexation.
Yeah, there's a word vexatious, I didn't know, wasn't it?
Dizzy name, um, and we just dropped the.
Yeah, councillor Russell, as chair of personnel, do you want to comment on this?
I think it should be, um, policy not code.
Okay.
And, and keep it simple, complaints policy.
Right, good, okay, so we'll all agree, we'll bring this back to the next council meeting, we're taking into account all these points, okay, great. Okay, nine C, CBC licensing policy. Code consultation, whatever you want to call it. Noted? Yeah, yeah, noted. Right, moving on. We've got a lot to get through tonight. Nine D cabinet office consultation. I don't normally intervene from the chair on this, but I was kind of, when I was going through this earlier, I was kind of questioning the relevance to this as a, as a sort of town council. We would more more likely be a sort of customer of this rather than a, I guess, an active participant in it perhaps, but. If anybody's got any thoughts on it, councillor Skilton, before we move on.
Yeah, sorry, I don't want to drag this out. Just the only thing I could think of that might be irrelevant to us is do we hold the pumping equipment for emergency flooding? And so in that sense, would we be a responder to to that?
Well, yes, we would, but in the sense of central beds is essentially the emergency planning authority. So. But I don't know, town clerk, we should stick to comment on that, but that was my thought on that.
So you're right to say that we do have some supplementary equipment. But it is, it is, it's almost domesticated. It's very, very, very small. Yeah. And we would be, we would be one of the services that would support, but they would be coordinated by emergency planning and CBC. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so councillor Russell.
And presumably we would offer the orchard centre if it was necessary for people to be evacuated. Yeah, so that would be our other contribution to it.
Yeah, which we have done that before, haven't we? Yes, yeah, 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 that's good. Yeah, no, okay, that's good. All right. So I think we can. Well, I think we're just noting it anyway, so we we'll just note that. Okay. Nine E public path diversion order. Receive and consider.
It looks very straight. It looks very straightforward to me. It's just putting the path onto the. Made path rather than a straight line that's on the map, isn't it?
Okay. All right, so I think we, yeah, we'll consider that. Fine, we'll move on. Nine F then, planning appeal, ploughhouse, two seven six London Road. Receiving, consider the letter from CBC about the planning application appeal. Thoughts, comments? We don't have to have any.
I've read through it all again and felt I had nothing to add.
Okay. Okay, I think councillor Barrett's feature is all on that one. So we'll move on to number ten. Planning applications. Excuse me, ten A. One oh five London Road. Yes, no. Okay, councillor Skilton.
What councillor faces at the start of the meeting notwithstanding, I I thought this was subject to neighbours, although it is a reasonably large extension. I hadn't considered the light because when I looked at the plan, I was just looking at it in isolation of that house, but.
Okay. So we want to. Object, subject to neighbours, what do we want to do?
Again, I I looked at it slightly different view and I thought such as neighbours was. The right approach from this council.
Okay. All right, I'm kind of not detecting any. Okay, so. Subject to neighbours then. Okay, moving on. Okay. All right, ten B sage close, three sage close. Subject to neighbours again, okay. Ten C Yorkshire grey ramp to the rear patio. Subject to neighbours, yeah. Ten D bitten drive. Subject to neighbours, okay. Yeah, ten E fourteen Walker Mead. Subject to neighbours, yeah, okay. Ten F rear of two St Andrews Close and eight St Andrews Close, Bigglesway. Councillor nine.
Sorry, I forgot to declare a non bocunary on this one. So I'll do that now for me. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, sorry, councillor Russell.
I think this is over development. It's leaving very little garden for the two houses that. Would be affected. The building itself. Purports to be two stories, but it's effectively like the bedroom's an attic. And they say they've got access because there's actually a garage at the bottom of one of the gardens, which they would use. To get access to to this property. I think it's serious over development and I think we should object.
Okay. Councillor Skilton and councillor Barrett.
Yeah, I I'm of the same view as councillor Russell on that. It is, it does look to be the barest of bare minimum you can get away with for a. A self-contained single dwelling. Interestingly, I wasn't at the last council meeting in June, but if you look at this council application, there's a letter from Bigglesway Town Council to say that we. Just put it as subject to neighbours. So this is, this has been before and I couldn't work out from the planning documents if there was a difference in this. Application and the number of the same. So I don't know what's gone on there, but but as this is on the agenda as this item, I think we should object as for over development.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Barrett.
Exactly the same. I thought we discussed this already and we'd discussed that it was over development and I thought we'd objected, but. So I must have missed that somewhere.
Fine, okay. That slip ups do happen, I guess, from time to time, but I think we've got a very clear view from colleagues now, so. I guess all those against the, yeah, putting forward objections to the application then. Yeah, okay, so that's, yeah, it's unanimous. Great. Okay, brilliant. Ten G, I think it's Dillian Farm. I know where it is, on Dunton Lane. So I say Dillian Farm. Not really any neighbours around there, but. Go on, councillor Russell.
Well, I don't think we should object. It just makes me quite sad because what was a rural lane is rapidly. Becoming. An extension of the town, as you say, yes, industrial, solar, substation, whatever.
Yeah.
I just think it's a bit sad, but you know, we can't object.
Point taken. Thank you. Yeah, great. Ten H Benson's Court Chapel Fields. Subject to neighbours. Yeah, okay. I, ten I. The car park adjacent to five St Andrews Street. These are the tree ones here anyway, so. No, nothing say ten J. Ten K just noted really, I guess. And then ten L, I suppose. Yeah, no. I think so. Okay, good. Okay, number eleven, planning application outcomes. You've all had a copy of that. Any comments now? Councillor Skilton.
I just think we don't want to note that it's disappointing that the application for the pedestrian drop off point. For the school, that's name just escaped me all of a sudden.
Bigglesway Academy?
Yes, sorry, Bigglesway Academy, yeah. Yeah, was approved as planned because it's, I think that will increase traffic outside the school that will, that will not serve as a pedestrian. Pick up and drop off point. That will serve for a magnet for cars and further make the residents live around their lives in misery with more cars turning up outside their houses and blocking their drives.
I mean, just as a sort of addition to that, I mean, I've had dialogue with the head teacher at Bigglesway Academy. I think I could pick up the phone and have a conversation if, as and when that. Gets installed and we can revisit this and see if there's further mitigations, but I think we can have a conversation sort of offline. With them about that. But, you know, I have to share your concerns to an extent, but let's, let's see. Okay. Okay, number twelve, the accounts then, please. Twelve A financial administration. Over to Peter. Sorry, councillor Russell, I apologize. Sorry.
I just wanted to make the point that I'm glad that the planning officer changed the. Nineteen High Street illuminated adversity. On the basis of our objection, with it being within a conservation area, and I I just wanted to highlight that and say that that's appreciated.
No, thank you, councillor Russell. Sorry for missing you. It's good that the. That central beds do recognise we have a conservation area from time to time, because I know it can be a bit, a bit elastic. Sorry, over. I'm trying to catch up for some lost time here now. Point twelve accounts then, over to the town clerk.
Okay. So on behalf of Ernest. What we've got here is what we would typically do. It's an indicative projected outturn for three twelfths of the year at end of June position. It gives a indicative deficit of ten K at the year end. However, we are a long, long way from the end of the financial year. So this is very much. A kind of indicative sense about where we might be going. If we remember last year. You know, even with the additional calls that we had and the projections that we made. And the budget determinations by members, we came in. Online and we expect to do the very same this year. So this is a very, very early stage sense about where we are. And will evolve as time goes on. Obviously, there's a description here of the, from Ernest in regard to the things that are causing initial concern. And as I say, the normal reports are online. Yeah.
Chair of FNGP.
Yes, councillor Strong.
You're some mayor noted the report and I think we're now getting much better information. The one thing that stood out to me is a hundred percent increase in CCTV cabling costs. I would like, if not tonight, an explanation as to how they can actually increase costs by a hundred percent. And if there was a contract, how they can actually justify that, that. I could understand a smaller increase, but a hundred percent is double what we were paying.
Okay, sure.
Would it be appropriate? Corim and I are well prepared for that question. That's we can take that offline and describe it with you if you want to.
Yes, and we can then share it with members.
Yeah, no, I think we'd all, we'd all probably all want to know, but in the first instance, they let the chair of FNGP know. So. Great, okay, so I mean, we don't need to, we don't, we just. Just note it. Yeah, we don't need to vote on. Pardon, sorry. Yes, councillor Barrett.
Very quick comment. I'd just like to admit maybe that the excellent work that is being done on the accounts. I find it very difficult to find anything wrong, which is quite annoying at times. I'm very balance sheet orientated, so I do look at all the other reports as well, and I think that it's just excellent work that's being done now, much, much better than in previous times, just like that minute, please.
No, thank you, councillor Barrett. I'm sure they'll pass it on to the the finance team as well. So, yeah, it's great.
particular bearing in mind, RealTus hasn't been up for a long period of time now. We are having problems with RealTus software at the moment, so watch the space.
Thank you. That's great. Okay, item, sorry, yeah, item thirteen, items for information. Thirteen A A one underpass. I don't know if councillor Russell wants to. Make any comments on that, the verbal update regarding the A one and underpass updates.
Just to say that things are moving on a bit with the work with Norville Parish Council that councillor North and I are involved in. We did have. At, I think, the June council, the response from National Highways after the clerk wrote to them about the underpass. Just saying that there's no plan for an underpass and the cost of constructing. An underpass between a motorway can vary significantly. Interesting that they call it a motorway because it's not actually a motorway, but never mind. And they say that it could be anything from a million to ten million. And they are aware of the footbridge that's being put forward by the developer who would be funding it. And so there's no reason to investigate an underpass. So, you know, they're saying, you know, get on with it and have the bridge. So then councillor Paul Daniels, the ward councillor for Norville, asked a question at Central Beds Council. Of councillor Y, the executive member for sustainability and sustainability and climate resilience. And asked her whether she was, would agree to support the project. There was quite a lot of waffle, if you listen to it online from councillor Y. She says the most pressing thing is to think about the cost of both of these schemes. Yes, well, we don't actually know what the cost of the scheme would be because no research has been done. She talks all the while about working with the developers, but this is not what the issue is. Because the developers, they've already pledged three million pounds. They're not going to pledge more. But the fact is that we need money from other sources. So. She talks, you know, again and again about the underpass hinging on the development. It does not. And she talks about going back to planning and that's actually not what it's about. So. I suppose where we are is that we need to make central beds understand that they have to move this forward. So we have indications both through Richard Fuller, our MP. And through a contact that I have who used to work for the Department of Transport and now works for a transport consultancy. That there is central government money available for a project like this. But they will only deal with the principal authority, the highways authority. So councillor Daniels has tried to put pressure on councillor Y and hasn't got very far at the moment. And I'm really quite angry about what's going on with the A one in Bedfordshire. Some of you will know about my involvement with the stakeholder group for the A one study in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. When I was there on behalf of BATPC. And the final report was never done. And what it comes down to is it's too difficult. The A one through Bedfordshire is too difficult. So because it's too difficult, nobody wants to do anything. And my view is that it may be too difficult to either divert the A one or do a whole A one improvement. But any improvement that we can make should be done. And this certainly comes under the the banner of active travel and not separating communities who. Can take advantage. So one lot take advantage of, for instance, supermarket, the other lot take advantage of jobs maybe. So there's certainly active travel budgets there. So I don't think it's good enough what happens. We could have the underpass. My understanding is that the A one south roundabout could be grade separated and that it was aligned when it was. Upgraded a few years back so that it could be grade separated. I wonder what's going to happen when home farm is developed and. That will require a fourth arm of the A one south roundabout. So that would certainly be a good idea to grade separate at the same time. So it just, it all comes back to the fact that we need central beds to take this on. The the A one south roundabout is different, but we all know that that's tied up with the land east at the moment with their section one oh six, which is daft, but that's another issue. So at the moment, we want to continue to pressurize central beds. To try and ensure that they do do some sort of study. I suspect they don't want to because it would cost some money to have officers doing that. But we can't compare the difference and therefore see whether we could get the extra three, four, five million. From a national government pot until we've got a specification that can be costed. So that's where we are with with the the Norville work at the moment.
Okay, thank you very much. That thorough update. Peter, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'd forgotten that, that we had written to CBC as well and they haven't responded.
Okay, all right, okay. Councillor Strong.
The first question I have, councillor Russell just mentioned the highway authority. Now, isn't the highway authority for the A one the National Highways Authority rather than Central Beds Council? So. Who should we be actually approaching to deal with that? I appreciate we've got to get central beds. Being active and proactive to make this work. But when you say the highways authority. In the central Billings Way, yes, it's the central beds, but on the A one, I believe it to be the National Highways Authority. And if there's National Highway, if if there is a national pot for such things, then. National Highway should be able to join in with us. It gets to me an idea that they're passing the buck. And there wasn't a problem with sorting out a route for the A one in general terms back in the nine, early nineties because. They had actually had a preferred route at that stage, which was not necessarily the best route possible, but it was a route and they did deal with it now. It seems that Bedfordshire as a road system and the A one is being, it becomes very much a second class citizen. And it's not good for north south traffic coming from the north to London when they get bogged down in Bedfordshire. Particularly if they're going to put a fifty mile an hour speed limit in to raise more cash for highways on the A one north of Bigglesway.
Okay, councillor Russell and then Peter.
I sympathise with the nineteen nineties, but unfortunately the route that was proposed then has largely been built on, so it's not going to happen now. It is central Bedfordshire as the local highways authority because unless they will support it, National Highways won't look at it. That's the problem. So we have to have the support of our principal authority.
Okay, councillor Foster and then town clerk.
I was just going to make the point that given that we've got the executive member for highways is also the central base executive member for finance, perhaps. We could ask our ward councillor colleague to have a have a conversation with councillor. With councillor Baker and see what what his views are on that matter.
Said he can try, so.
So I'll take that as a, yes, we'll absolutely, we'll write to councillor Baker and get a positive response.
I see you got fourteen, fourteen witnesses, councillor Foster, thirteen. Town clerk and then we'll definitely move on.
It literally is two seconds, just to be clear from what, because councillor Russell answered my question, really. We have written to CBC, we have written to National Highways. It was a joint. We have written to CBC, we have written to National Highways, it was a joint motion, if you remember, yes. So the National Highways came back within a reasonable period of time. It wasn't a helpful response, but it was a response. CBC have said nothing, so we need to persevere. We've, we've recognised that important factor already.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, thirteen B, Fen Reeves Association, I, there's a paper in there, we're just going to take it as, as rad, I don't think there's anything else to add. Uh, so we'll go straight to thirteen C, Health Hub update. Um, do you want to talk about that, Peter, yeah?
Members asked me to write to Central Bedfordshire Council to, uh, remind them of the fifteen million pound commitment that we, the conversation that we had before. Remember, that's rather a large sum, difficult not to remember. Um, but CBC, uh, had no recollection of the fifteen million when I wrote to them formally and I engaged with the heads of service. So, um, it may be that members want to persevere with that one.
Okay, councillor Strong.
Uh, well, in view of the fact they can't find their emails or letters, um, I think it's best to suggest that we recommend that we write back to them saying, this is the letter that you haven't, you say you haven't received. This shows it was received, would you please respond?
Would that be possible? Yeah, okay, town clerk, okay, I'll, I'll leave that for you to, uh, pursue, um, in, in that way, okay. Thank you very much, um, great, um, ten D, public path diversion order notice. Just for information, no, no, great, okay. Um, and then we've got the quarterly bank reconciliations, I think Peter was going to do in, um, Ernest's absence.
It's just again a segment of fact and looking at councillor Barrett who, who volunteered himself to, to check through the, the intricate detail associated with that. So obviously we're obliged to do that as part of our financial regulations. Um, I don't know whether councillor Barrett wanted to send anything connected to that process.
I'm very happy with them.
Great. Good, thank you, that's great to know and I think do, again, pass that on to Ernest and the team that, you know, that, that the council's been very happy with the way things have been going so far. Great, okay, number fourteen, public open session, is there anyone online, Asia, no? Um, councillor Fage, you wish to say and add anything?
Yes, just briefly, so, um, I noticed this evening, obviously officers have taken a few actions to write to officers at Central Beds. But something that we can perhaps think about over the next few months is how we use joint committee to, to have that discussion. Because that's an opportunity to properly summon Central Beds officers and hopefully just save a little bit of, uh, town council officer time going back and forth and reporting and writing a report and then saying that they haven't had a response. Let's get some senior officers coming to joint committee and I'd like to know what the town council's priorities are in terms of who you want to hear from there. So, um, please come back to me on that one. Um, speaking of which, I think we, we, one of the things we do go back and forth on quite a lot is on section one O six money. So I think that is coming to, uh, we, we plan to bring that to joint committee in October. Um, and I think it's come to town council before that anyway, but, um, I was speaking to Karim earlier. If, if the town council is able to formalise any examples of things that you've failed, you know, you've tried and failed to get section one O six money for. If you've got that pushback from Central Beds officers, I'd really like to have just a little look at that before we, before we put those items together. Because I think that should probably be our starting point in terms of that conversation. But, uh, personally, from my point of view, and I'd like to hear from the town council, of course, I think we need to start getting a bit more strategic and step by step with some of this now, rather than, rather than that little back and forth. But those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, that's great, yeah.
All I was going to briefly say to councillor Fage was that, um, as part of our engagement process, we met with the chief exec of CBC very recently. One of the issues that were to discuss was joint committee and how we can make that committee more effective. And I think that, uh, without speaking on behalf of another chief exec, I think, um, Mr Coffey is, is open to looking at the terms of reference of the committee. And, and to try and make it and give it some more effective power and indeed even give some consideration to budget, so, yeah.
Okay, that's good, so positive news, but I'm sure officers will follow up with councillor Fage with member input about the section one O six priorities in due course. Okay, thank you councillor Fage. Great, okay, um, we've now come to the end of the, uh, public open session. Um, can we now vote to go into exempt, please? All those in favour? Yep, great, thank you very much, we'll now move into exempt session.